Hey Sean, you might want to mute until you're ready.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to do that.
Sounds like you're butchering a pig.
Okay, so we will go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, May 11th, 6:05 PM. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we're meeting remotely on Zoom following the guidance of the Iowa Public Information Board. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Barb Mittman. Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Luke Spence.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Okay, first item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion by Jason and second by Dane. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Karen will call for the vote.
Sampson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's approved, takes us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Sandy motion, Luke second, discussion on consent agenda. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Eric.
Aye.
I think it was Sampson. Was Sampson the second?
Spence.
Spence.
Spence. Spence?
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Sampson.
Aye.
Okay, and that is approved, takes us into the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. And with that, if you are joining us this evening and do have comment for the public forum, you can identify yourself from the Zoom by clicking Raise Your Hand, or if you're on the phone, you can press *9, which indicates you would like to speak. I'll give folks a minute, just in case they're trying to figure out the technology. Okay. And seeing no comment, we will go ahead and close the public forum, move into old business. The first item is ordinance number 1010, 2019, 2020, an ordinance amending the city code of Nevada, Iowa by adding Chapter 114, cable franchise fee, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Brian, discussion on that.
Had we, we talked about how this might pertain to the Colo Telco as well, if we figured out what the status is on that? And doing a similar thing with them?
And Karen, did you hear the question?
I did. I was wondering if Rick was going to answer.
Okay. Which you did up top say Rick Martinez is talking, but I didn't hear anything, so I don't know if it was just me or not.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I believe, and maybe Erin can refresh my memory, but I believe she thought maybe that might have been an oversight and we need to take a look at that. Because we probably should have done something at that time. Erin, is that, is that what your understanding is?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know anything. We need to look into it. I have not done anything, but we need to know like a map of where they are so that we can start inquiring. So Rick will have to work on that.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out and see what information I can get from them, and then I'll forward that to you so we can, we can address that issue. Luke, that was a good point. I, I missed that. I was concentrating on the Metronet thing and forgot all about checking on the Colo thing concerning the franchise. So we'll get some follow-up done on that and kind of keep everybody apprised as to what we find out.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, and in case folks are watching and wondering what this is, we add an ordinance on the books specific to MediaCom. And now that Metronet is planning to come to town, we're adding a different chapter that'll apply to all cable providers. So with this being an ordinance, this is a second reading, it'll come back for a third reading at our next meeting. Any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Sampson.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Okay, and that moves us to old business B, Central District Infrastructure Project, Construct, Inc. Item one is approved, pay request number two, in the amount of $452,916.30.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion by Dane and a second by Jason. Any discussion?
I, I got a little bit. Is there anybody from Construct that's listening at all? Probably not. It doesn't look like it on the list.
Sean or Jack Green might be able to answer, depending on.
Okay, Mike, if we look farther down the agenda tonight, we're talking about some work that was done on 8th Street quite a few years ago with several different issues that were done. Stupid dogs. And I'm just, if we're going to write a check for a half a million dollars, maybe a little bit of assurance that the work that's being done isn't some of the mistakes that looked like they were made 12 years ago by the same contracting group aren't being done this time. Or maybe give them some leverage to, to maybe try to make right with those folks down the street or something along those lines. If we put this off for a meeting, I don't know. Those are just some thoughts I had.
Yeah, what I think of that too is, and we can talk about that other one, ultimately the contractor is responsible for subcontractors. I mean, I go through it every day. So that's a whole different issue what we talk about later, but I think Construct probably gets, I don't know that holding up half a million dollars is just so they can say, yeah, uh huh, we're just got to hope. And, and I'm a little more confident that, you know, and nothing against Larry, if he's listening. I know that we weren't inspecting that job on 8th Street. We had someone else doing it, but I know now that we're doing our own and that I'm pretty confident Sean's not going to let something like that slip through his fingers like it might have before. Kind of where I'm at, Luke, you know, on that. You know, we're doing, we're doing our own inspections now where before, I think HR Green was having them and everyone makes a mistake, but I think especially with this being at light, I'm pretty sure, and with the Roger Sampson thing, I think Sean's probably on top of it pretty, pretty good right now.
So that, that kind of helps my, my concerns with that, but mainly because, you know, I, in the five years I've lived on 8th Street, I don't think anybody said their yard dug or that, that we're going to talk about later on. And they found several errors in that one time. So there's probably other stuff in the ground too that, that weren't taken care of. So I'm just, I don't know. It's.
This is, this is Erin. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'll let Larry speak to the, to the previous project, but I just want you to be cautious in, in not paying for work that's been done for, for a current project to hold it as leverage, because your contract will have a certain amount of days in which you can make payments for, for duty, for work that's already been performed. And so I just don't want you to get caught in a window where you're past that date and, and you're in breach of this agreement. So I understand the concern. I just don't want to put the city in a bad position.
You know, this is, this is Larry, and I've, I've been listening with some interest here. Now, I, I, this, this preceded my time with the city and with HR Green. So I, I can't defend anyone that was around during that time. But I know there, there were some other issues with that project, you know, some other minor issues and blah, blah, blah. But, and, and it may have been what prompted the city to take over the inspection. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, the, the construction observation doesn't guarantee the performance of the contract. The contractor is ultimately responsible for whether HR Green is doing the observation or the city's doing that or anyone else. So the, the responsibility to meet the requirements, the contract documents falls purely on the contractor's lap. So neither, neither city nor HR Green can, can watch everything that the contractor does. And, but the, the inspection or observation is, is there to make sure that the bulk of everything that's, that's being done is, is, is somebody's watching. And, but some things happen. And I can guarantee, and I, I talked to Sean about this over the last 10 years, that the projects that I've been involved in, we had next to no occurrences like this, where we've had some failures later on. You know, why, why this happened with the, with the sewer of the Ackermans, I don't know. I, I don't know what the construction specifications were. It was, it was an add-on for that project. The sanitary sewer main was not intended to be reconstructed. But I presume the bids came in well, the city decided to go ahead and replace the, the main. And then when the, the services were not intended to be reconstructed as part of the contract. And the, but at the request of property owners, they could request that their services be replaced, but they had to pay for them. And that's, I think that was referenced in a letter from the Ackermans, that they paid to have that service pulled in. So I couldn't, I couldn't find any, any specifications or requirements of services. But I, and I couldn't really tell anything from the photos. But from the description, it was not done in a real good way. So. But it, it did last 13 years, and that's quite a while to, to hold the contractor's speech in fire for that. But, you know, some things happen. But I agree with, I agree with Erin, her comments about holding payment on the downtown project for some work that was done 13 years ago, that both of those should stand on their own. So I, I think you want to be careful about trying to withhold back money on the downtown project to remedy something that happened 13 years ago on different projects.
Okay, any, any other discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Sampson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Mittman.
Aye.
Okay, then that passes. And if anyone on the, in the meeting gets muted, it might just be me trying to figure out where feedback's coming from, so you can unmute yourself when you need to. So the next item is old business B2, approved change order number one in the amount of $5,900.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Jason and Dane, any discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Sampson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Mittman.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, takes us to item C. Approved pay request number five for the W Avenue paving project from Absolute Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $96,972.93.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we'll say Brian and Barb. And so that'll open up discussion. And with that, Sean, do we have an update on where that project is?
Um, yeah, we are, actually, we're done pouring concrete. They just poured the two approaches this morning. They've done quite a bit of backfilling. And W Avenue is, is open currently. The, hands of 10th Street Place and 10th Street Place. We'll probably be looking at opening up maybe on Wednesday. And there's just more backfill and then heating to go along with that. So it's, the concrete is down, I'm glad to say.
Do we know if we came in at the quoted amount, or are we over, are we under?
I don't know, to be honest with you. Kind of a, it was a while, so I, I can't remember if we had a change order or not. We Karen or, or Larry?
What was the question again?
Do we have a change order for that?
Did we?
Excuse me, I repeat that again.
Do we have a change order for W Avenue? I thought we.
We did.
Yeah, we had, but there were two small change orders. One, one we had to use a different erosion control because they couldn't put a steel fence. So they used wilds, which is just a, a tube filled with erosion control material. That was like, I don't know, like $1,400. And then there was a, there was a discussion of using GeoGrid out there, a portion of it, that was $1,400, I think. I think all told, we've had a, we've had a change order of $3,200 total.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Hanson.
Aye.
Mittman.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye, sorry.
Sampson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Okay, then that has passed. And Jason, thank you for catching that question that came in down below. I didn't see it come. So that has passed, takes us to item D, Walnut Shag Bark Storm Sewer Project On Track Construction. Item one, approved pay request number two in the amount of $4,227.50.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Sandy and Luke, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Eric.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Sampson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Mittman.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, takes us to item two, resolution number 58, 2019, 2020, resolution accepting the Walnut, Walnut Shag Bark Storm Sewer Project substantially complete.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane and Barb discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Mittman.
Aye.
Sampson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Then that passes, takes us to new business. New business A is discussion appropriate. Follow-up on request for reimbursement for sewer issues from Mike and Patsy Ackerman at 638 8th Street. Okay, so we will open this up. And then if the Ackermans are on, you can raise your hand or click *9 so that we allow you to address your item as well. Karen, do you know where they're planning to participate?
I don't know one way or another.
Just wanted to make sure. If we knew, then I'd try to make sure they logged in, but I don't see. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up discussion. Is there anyone from staff that, that wants to speak first or just open up for council to hash it out?
This is Larry. I, I made some earlier comments about, you know, research what I found out. I, I had no previous knowledge of, of much to do with this street. It was constructed in 2007. I started working for the city in late 2009. So this preceded me. Sean had informed me that HR Green did the construction observation. And that's, you know, as I said, the, the Ackermans did pay for the sewer, the sewer service. And there was, there was quite a bit of detail in the letter in regard to that. So the, their description of what the problem was, was that there was approximately a 90-degree bend from the clay tile sewer that came out of their house and connected to the plastic, new plastic sewer service from the main. And what they, they used there was a, was a flexible coupling referred to as a furring fill coupling, which is inappropriate for long-term fixes underground. And in particular, in a case like that, it should not have been used for a, for a bend like that. And, you know, who, who would have observed that? Who would have inspected that? Would be anybody's guess, but as I indicated before, the, the workmanship and, and quality of the work is the responsibility of the contract regardless of who's been in construction observation. So with that, I did, I did notify Doug Wade at Construct either last Thursday or Friday that this was on the agenda for discussion. So didn't, didn't necessarily tell him that he was on the hook for it, but my understanding was that from Rick Martinez, that the claim is going to be submitted to insurance company for resolution. And so depending on the outcome of that, we can probably discuss resolution in the future.
Okay, anything from council?
Yeah, I don't think we should do anything until we hear back from insurance on that.
I'd agree with that.
You know, I sent an email to Rick and the mayor today. In my opinion is, I don't even think we should give it to our insurance company because I think everybody just says we pay insurance for a reason, let them just pay. Well, the insurance company might pay, but our, and, and I don't know, and I don't want to belittle anyone that they don't understand maybe insurance. But I really do, because I've had some big things in the last 10 years. When you have a claim, there's a thing called a mod.
And Brian.
What's that?
I think you froze for a second. I heard you say there's a thing called a mod, and then it froze. I don't know.
And a mod is your score of how, when you have claims, your mod goes up. Well, your mod makes your rates go up. So just saying, just let the insurance company pay, let the insurance company pay, let the insurance company pay. It still makes our rates go up, so we still ultimately pay. We might not pay now. And does it, does it stink that somebody did a bad job on it, but it's been 12 or 13 years like that? So I really think if, my opinion is if Ackermans have a claim, they need to talk to Construct about it, not us. That's kind of where I'm at. We didn't do the work, and it's been 12 years. At, at what point do we say, you know, we can't just pay, pay because somebody sends us a letter? So I don't even think our insurance company should, I mean, whatever. I mean, if they want to look at it, fine, but that's just kind of where I'm at on it. I don't know if everybody got that, but if I didn't, you don't understand something I just said, ask me, I'd explain it to you.
Well, I, I think they certainly have a right to have somebody reimburse them, whether it's the city or, or, or constructor, somebody else that, I, I, I'm not sure about that. I will say, I've had other people that live between where I live, I think you all know where I live, and, and, and the house we're talking about, that they had some, an area washed out where the, the soil had basically run out and was lower than the curb. So there's a lot of pooling of water and it was destroying their grass. And when I brought it, I can't remember who I talked to, if it was Mike or maybe Jeremy, it's been a year or two ago, but they brought some, we brought some dirt out and filled it up to bring it up to the right level. And it was as a result of the way the construction was done way back when. That doesn't mean that, I, I think we're obligated for this, but it, it, there's, there's a balance there, I think, between, you know, it's been 12 years, but at the same time, we should, somebody should be taking responsibility for the work we're doing, whether that's us or, or Construct or something like that, remains to be seen. But, you know, i- is there statute of limitations? I don't know. There wasn't, you know, a year or two ago when, when we had the dirt put in. The dirt was a lot cheaper though. So is there a cost that comes into play too? That's a lot of different factors there, but we, we did fill dirt for the same, pretty much the same construction job within the last, you know, since I've been on the council, if that means anything.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I feel bad for Ackerman and anybody on 8th Street, because there's a reason that synergy's not in business anymore. And I think we're starting to see why. You would just hope that, you know, Construct's going to say it was 12 years also, but you'd think some part of them would say, we'll try to help you out. You know? And, and we can get into specifics of the, of what it is, but I don't know if this place or time for the specifics on that, but I just don't feel like it's our duty to pay for, for that bill. I think we should try to do what we can to help them, and if that means leveraging Construct a little bit, you know, maybe we could do, but Construct are pretty good guys, so they might just say, hey, let me help you out, you know, too. But, yeah, you just wonder what's coming down the road on 8th Street after some of the things we've seen, hopefully nothing. But so I've, I've said enough, that's. I, and I agree with what you guys said earlier, Dane and whoever too, that would need to wait and see what ICAP does, if that's what we're going to do, is give it to ICAP.
Well, Brian, this is Larry, and I, I agree with everything you just said, and that's same discussions that, that Sean and I have had, that it isn't anything, you know, the, the failure of that sewer service is anything to, anything the city did. And it certainly wasn't anything that HR Green did. And it doesn't seem reasonable that either one of those two parties would, would pay. So, but in the end, you know, maybe everybody, everybody comes together and makes it go away somehow. And we probably need to have those discussions somehow with, with Construct. As you said, synergy with subcontractor that booked the sewer, and I kind of forgot about that. But, so we may need to, you know, sit down and, and, and figure out how to, how to resolve this. On the other hand, you know, it's not right for the Ackermans to leave $6,000 out on, on something that was done 13 years ago, 12, 13 years ago. So we probably need to have those discussions with Construct and see where we can go with it.
Anything else?
So if we're going to do a proper, appropriate follow-up, um, my opinion is that maybe Rick or Larry or Sean or somebody should reach out to Construct, and maybe we need to have a little powwow, the, the immediate people and, and try, try to come to some.
Yeah, well, and that's, as we've discussed, you know, it has worked for 13 years.
All appropriate pardons to say about it.
It sounded like it failed, you know, right after it was done, so. There's been some service there. There's been some service there.
So I was looking at Allison's question here, um, got sidetracked a little bit, but, so as far as, as action, do we need, did Larry, did you answer, Brian, that that was what you intended to do is talk to Construct, or do we need an actual motion?
Yes.
So.
On this until we've had time before we discuss it with contractor.
Okay, so that's the next step is to discuss it with the contractor?
Yes.
Okay, everybody get to that?
Thank you for that, Larry.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that'll take us to new business B, resolution number fifty-nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The resolution to approve the professional services agreement with HR Green for the SRF-sponsored project application.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think that was Luke and Brian, did I get it right?
Close enough.
Okay, discussion on that item. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Vince?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Mittman?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Sampson?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Okay, then that passes, takes us to item C, approved purchase of Lucas automatic CPR machine for the fire department.
Can you guys see me?
Yep, we can see it.
So, um, we had talked a little bit about this, uh, with Director Martinez, um, regarding, uh, this is part of our next year capital purchase, but there's a delay in production, so we wanted to get going on the bidding and, uh, the process for the Lucas device. Just real quickly, I'll show you can, uh, if you see the device, we've attached it, this is a small mannequin, uh, that we've attached and we have a couple of blankets under to see that it is appropriate for, uh, children, mostly in the eight and above range, but it's not really age dependent. It's more chest size dependent, so basically you turn it on, you adjust the plunger, and then you set the rate at thirty-one, your hands free. I don't know if you can see that at all. So this is a CPR machine that is much more effective at compressions, you're getting a steady compression. It will stop at, uh, thirty, and that beep tells you to give two breaths, and then it will pick back up again. So that's the suction cup out of the way, so. Anyway, um, the reason we're interested in the Lucas device is a couple of reasons. One is, um, we tend to have around twenty to thirty, I would say maybe even a little higher, uh, CPR cases. In fact, we had one last night where our officers were involved and the fire department was involved in. Uh, the Lucas device is a standard of care now for any cardiac arrest, and, uh, there were grants throughout Iowa to equip ambulance services with Lucas devices, but they really didn't go at the first responders to provide those devices. A number of grants are out there for folks, we've tried, uh, the, um, Firehouse sub grant. Um, we've tried the AFG grant and stuff and, uh, just whatever reason, uh, we didn't get those grants. Uh, this has been on our agenda for quite some time to provide effective CPR. I also talked to, uh, councilperson Mittman, asked a couple of questions about, uh, you know, related to this device. Again, it's not really, uh, age dependent, more as size dependent. But as you can see from, uh, human CPR, it's about thirty to forty percent effective, and there are a number of pauses and breaks that happen based off of rescuer fatigue. Um, where this device is continuous and, uh, typically we'll run these devices all the way into the emergency room and keep them going. So one of the major advantages of a Lucas device, especially during this COVID time, is this is the only device that's recommended for COVID patients because it is able to be decontaminated, the rubber suction piece can be sterilized, uh, and you have a spare. The other thing is it reduces the number of people that actually have to touch the patient. So if you were to have a patient that was intubated with, uh, a breathing tube and you had a HEPA filter on it, you could literally have one rescuer in, in the area providing ventilation while the CPR device is, uh, providing its, uh, compressions. Uh, it is a pricey item, um, they used to be about eighteen thousand, uh, the dealer, since Stryker took over, the price for us is fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five and sixty-seven cents. Um, but this is, uh, uh, Bondurant has three of these in their emergency vehicles and they've had them for, I want to say six or so years so far, uh, but the devices are, uh, warranted and, uh, they're really, again, a standard of care for, uh, CPR cases.
So Ray, you're saying, uh, we would have these, like, just one of them available for our first responders?
Yeah, my goal is to continue with grants and to try and get another one for the police department. Uh, if you recall, the fire department had about five AEDs, and, uh, we started putting AEDs in the police vehicles. Um, so our police have actually had two, uh, saves related to AEDs, uh, by making it available to them. I think initially, um, we would put the Lucas device in our medical truck, but I can see, I mean, the price is what's going to be the big detractor, but, uh, at some point, it would be nice to have one in a police vehicle, but that's a whole discussion that I need to have with the director and I'm not, I, I'm not given the authority for that one because he's the director over the police department as well. So, but, um, at some point, having immediate access to a Lucas device, uh, we are seeing huge results. It went out to, uh, uh, the business out by Van Wall, a bystander started CPR, a Lucas device showed up, we defibrillated, and that person, uh, uh, was able to walk out of the hospital, so. Uh, I, I think to answer your question, we would start out with one, uh, it would be on a first responder vehicle. Our response time, uh, has been averaging between, uh, three to five minutes with three being the main. Uh, if we can get a Lucas device and an AED on scene within three minutes, I'm pretty comfortable that we would have some pretty good outcomes.
Okay, council, any other questions or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb and Jason, further discussion.
Um, Ray, I know you've said Bondurant has some, but do they give you, and I know how much we use, it's going to matter, but is there kind of a lifespan on this? Is it something that's going to have to get replaced in two years, or is it?
Oh, no.
O- other than, other than technology changing like it does every day, but, so is it, are they pretty lifelong?
Yeah, if you look at the top of this device, uh, they can make the upgrade if CPR standards change. Uh, right now, the current standard is thirty and two, but if some research comes up and says, no, we don't want thirty and two, we want twenty-seven and a half compressions, uh, they can upload the change in this device. Um, the worst thing that you would ever have to do is change a battery out, but, but at this point, uh, there's an electric charge and lithium battery in this, uh, pack that the charge actually, the case stays charged up. And then when you have a battery indicator on here that tells you what the battery level is, um, right up here. If, um, you can see the battery level there, maybe, anyway. Um, so at this point, I have not heard of any device ever needing a new battery. I haven't heard any problems with any of the strikers, and I know that, uh, the company is a pretty well-known throughout EMS world with power cots and everything else, so at this point, we're just not seeing any problems with these, uh, as far as wear and tear and, and product, you, I, I would, me personally, I think this thing will probably go ten years at our current pace or more.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Mittman?
Hi.
Sampson?
Hi.
Spence?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
And that is approved, takes us to item D, approved purchase of bunker gear lockers for fire department.
So our current gear lockers are close to, I want to say thirty years old or more. Uh, they're straight wire lockers, I don't know if they were fabricated in town or not, but the, uh, dimensions of them are eighteen inches, and we have now forty-six members. So the gear lockers are pretty tight, and one of the things that I've noticed is some of our folks are putting the gear on the floor because they're, don't have enough room in their lockers, we don't have the capability to give people two at a time. So this is, uh, this is the red organizer locker right here, so I'll just show you particularly the gear. So one of the things that we're looking at is, uh, with these racks, is they're heavy steel. They have helmet holders that, uh, keep the helmet off of the, the platform so it can air out. We have hooks and hangers for PPE, our, um, bags, and, and of course, our gear fits in there nice and orderly. So this is what we would look at getting, this is, uh, one, two, three, four, five. So this is five units and they're back to back, so I'm going to walk around the backside for you. So you can see they're double-sided, and, um, so what are the benefits of this? One is with the new racks that we get, um, we can have two assigned per person, and that will allow them to keep their old gear and their new gear and their PPE or, um, EMS gear that they can keep in the second one. The other thing that it does is, I think in the near future, our folks are going to have to start keeping clothing at the fire station, a change of clothing. Uh, any exposures to COVID, as the remodel is finishing up, we're going to want our folks to take showers, change clothes, and, and get out of that, so we're, if you look at these two spaces right here, uh, you would have gear, a new gear, an old gear, an EMS gear, and your lightweight, uh, wildland gear. Um, with all the new things going on, um, if we can air out our gear and keep it upright and clean and out of sunlight, uh, our gear will last us a lot longer, and it's also a lot safer when we're talking about cancer in the fire service. So, uh, this is a locker right here, this one is not mobile like ours would be. But you can see they're pretty sturdy and, uh, I mean, it's not just about cosmetics, but it's a much more professional look, uh, for our station as well. So this is. So with that, any questions?
Hey Ray, had you budgeted for this? Is this an, is this an add-on?
No, we budgeted for this last year during our budget session. We have been, uh, what we do with our capital projects is we whiteboard everything, we vote on it with our officers, and we pick the highest priorities to continue with our objectives. So as you recall, there was a fire engine, there was new SCBA's, there was new gear, and so, um, we went through the list and our high priorities were Lucas device, gear rack, and a replacement for a sixteen-year-old pickup truck. And then we have tier-two level stuff, which is some hand tools and different things that would be great for life, but not, we could function without them. And so what we did was we picked the top tier, and, and the reason we're moving on this one as well is so, uh, we currently have a number of bids that you have, I did get a late bid that was like seventeen thousand something from Feld. And so because these projects take a long time, uh, to try and get all your bids and get everything, uh, moving forward, we wanted to jump ahead of it because there is some production time and shipping time and lag time. And I would rather roll into July, making the order and getting, uh, getting the product and have it delivered in August, rather than try and order it in July and, um, I'm sorry, get it approved and bid it in July, and then we're cutting up into the winter when we're trying to replace these projects, so it is a budgeted product.
Okay. Well, with that, then I'll, I'll move to approve option one, the bid for sixteen five eighty-five from MES.
A second.
I muted myself. Brian and then Dane, further discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Hanson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Sampson?
I'm you, Jason.
It looks like he's sleeping, but he got frozen.
Did you guys, did you hear?
Hi, from Jason.
Spence?
Hi.
Eric? Mittman?
Hi.
Okay, so that is approved, thanks for those presentations, Ray. Moves us to item E, approved purchase of backhoe for public works department.
You want to have discussion first? Does Jeremy want to talk, or do we want to just move ahead?
Jeremy, do you have anything you would like to address on this one? I would assume no, so we'll vote it. Um, if someone wants to make a motion, go for it, if not, we'll start and have discussion.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so Brian moved to approve and then Sandy a second. So discussion.
Do we know what the budgeted amount was for, uh, for this?
Can you guys hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm doing this, I had my phone muted too. Um, we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand out of the street department for this. And it was, it was already budgeted when I started, Mike had, had not started the budgets. And, you know, talking to Karen, um, I didn't know that other departments could chip in on this, you know, being, we started talking about it and between the cemetery streets, uh, the sanitary sewers and the, and the water breaks, the four, you know, four separate departments use it, so we thought maybe all four of them could pitch in and help pay for. I just don't know, you know, like, there's sixteen graves a year, about sixteen graves a year that get dug. So, you know, the life of our last home, we used about, you know, roughly four hundred hours to dig graves, you know, water breaks to be more than that. So, don't know what departments are going to pitch in how much, or, or if they all will. I, you know, public work will, but I don't know about parks, it'd be great if they would. But like I said, we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand and, and I think it was seventy-four one.
That sounds pretty good.
And I don't know if I needed to be more specific that I was approving option one, going with the, with the case machine.
Is that what you intended for the second?
Yes, please.
And we will accept that qualification. Further discussion?
Jeremy, it's Barb, um, did you have, or did some folks from your staff have a chance to actually, um, use or not use, but be, did you get a chance to drive it?
Yes, yes, we ran all three of these machines, they bought them up and left them all three here for like a week.
Okay. And so the case, the case is your first pick regardless of the price?
Yes, um, after comparing, after seeing Yes, um, after comparing, after seeing the, the John Deere and seeing how cheaply it is made and the options that are not on it compared to the other machines, you can see why there's so many of them out there. There's, like I listed, there's so many things on this, this case that makes it so you don't have operator fatigue, you know, for the, for the operators that sit in them all day, every day. That is, that it puts the case so far ahead of the John Deeres and the safety and, and the, and the op, the operator's safety. It, it's really unbelievable. I wish, you know, I wish I'd have known more before we started this, but I'm glad we, we test drove all these machines. But if, if, if it was mine, I, I'd definitely spend the extra money, you know. It's like get, uh, a Cadillac over a Yugo. It's just the safety features put it well, uh, well ahead of everything.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, council please vote.
Hanson.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Mittman.
Hi.
Nielsen.
Hi.
Sampson.
Hi.
Spence.
Hi.
Okay, then that passes. Um, and before we go to reports, Eric, is there a problem if I allow a public comment that missed getting the hand up earlier?
Absolutely not. Go ahead.
So, Allison, if you would like to let council know what your request is, I'm gonna click allow to talk and you'll need to state your name and address. Um, and then you can explain your request here. Mouse froze, buddy guys. Here we go. Okay, now it says talking permitted. Allison, are you able to speak?
Yep, great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks. So, I'm not sure if everybody could see my written comment or not, but, um, I, I live at eight-fourteen Eighth Street. My name's Allison Severson. Um, you know, I think partly because of, I'm also bathing myself, so sorry for the background noise. We're all in quarantine, right? Um, I think partly because of the construction on, on Sixth Street, there's a lot more traffic on Eighth and, um, people are going really very quickly, um, many of them texting and driving and there are so many kids on this, this couple block range where there's no stop sign. Um, so even if it's just something temporary, it would be really nice while there are so many kids home to, to, to make it a little bit safer.
And maybe Rick, um, if, if you have any comment about Eighth Street in that area as far as enforcement and whatnot, maybe? Might have to unmute him. There we go.
And maybe while he's working on that, I will note that I, I called earlier today and requested that we maybe get a mobile speed unit, um, if nothing else. So, I think we're on the list, but it sounds like the list is long, so.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got you unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, there's no way for me to verify whether you can or not. Um, we can, we have the speed trailer that's been on E Avenue because of the, the detour that's supposed to be taking place on, um, on, uh, US thirty, but I can let the officers know to spend a little more time on Eighth Street. Uh, that is getting a lot of traffic. Uh, traffic's picked up on Fifth Street as well, um, because Sixth Street is down. But we can, we can now have a little more presence there and see what we can do as far as, uh, trying to control that traffic as much as possible. Um, but do you have any particular times that are any better or worse? That helps when we know when the traffic flow is the best.
Well, I hate to speak for all of Eighth Street, uh, but I would, you know, afternoon to evening seems to be worse.
Okay, all right. I'll let the, uh, evening officers be aware of that. Um, I'll let them all know, but, but especially the evening officers. So, um, we'll see what we can do with that. Hopefully, it's not gonna take a long time before, uh, Sixth Street's open again. But, uh, in the meantime, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I would, I would echo what Allison's saying, just living a block away. I, even being on a, at a four-way stop at my house, there's still, I, I, I see people actually run the stop signs every once in a while, a lot more frequently lately, but, you know, it's not uncommon to have a lot of traffic here when schools, um, when school is in session as it's getting in and out, as parents and buses are coming and going. Um, the, but the traffic we're seeing now is much more consistent and regular rather than just the, you know, the little bit of a rush that comes with school and it, there's definitely an increase in traffic. Um, and, and, and like I think Allison said in her, in the, in the text chat that she typed in, uh, the, the pedestrian traffic, which is probably the case in a lot of parts of town, but bikes and, and walkers and, you know, I, looking out my window right now and I see three families worth of kids just outside my house right now. So, um, it's definitely, it's being a little bit more high traffic with the kids out. It's probably something that should be looked into. But that, that speed, uh, trailer would probably be a great first start.
Okay, I'll, um, uh, we'll reset it tomorrow. It's being charged right now, but we'll get that reset and, and I'll pass it on to the staff.
Anything else on that issue? Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Allison. I know when I lived out there too, even before construction, people liked to go fast on Eighth Street, so it's good to keep an eye on it. Okay, so then that will close out the second mini-public forum there and we will go into reports, um, starting with Rick.
Okay, well, you have my report and I'll answer any questions you may have on that. Um, I've been talking with Karen. Uh, she reached out with, um, Mike Maloney. Uh, we'd kinda like to have, um, a workshop, uh, set up. We're seeing what, what times might be available for him so we can go more in-depth and discussion concerning, uh, the utility rates. Um, Karen, did you happen to hear from him today?
I have not.
Okay, so as soon as we get that put together, uh, we'll reach out and let everyone know. Um, and, uh, when we had the, uh, the budget meeting, uh, with the budget committee, um, that, that's, it's gonna be critical that we get moving on that. Uh, I'd like to see it start sooner than later and unfortunately, this is a terrible time with, uh, with the COVID pandemic and everything else. Um, but, you know, we're gonna have to do something and I, I'm afraid that if we put it off, the increase is gonna be higher as long as, um, as long as we wait. So, I, I think that I, I'd like to have an open discussion about that so we're all on the same page and, um, when the community starts asking questions, we're able to give them answers that, um, that at least we understand and we can pass on to them. So, that's pretty much all I got unless you guys have any questions about anything else.
Hey, hey, uh, Rick, it's Luke. Uh, where are we at on the nuisance abatement program for this season? Has that been started or assigned to somebody or at all yet?
Yes, we're working on that now. Uh, we've got several complaints that have come in and, um, we have a, um, a couple offices that are out there looking for them. So, if there's any that you come across, get them to me and we'll get them assigned so we can get those taken care of. Um, nuisance abatement's come around every year. We usually handle anywhere from eighty to a hundred, sometimes more. Um, and, uh, you know, we can't look at every yard, but whenever someone has a, has a, an address that we could take a look at, we're certainly gonna look at that and see what we can do with that. And as, uh, as we've done in the past, our, our goal isn't, isn't to find people. Our goal is to get properties cleaned up. And we try to work with people as much as possible 'cause I, I don't wanna see somebody get a four, five hundred dollar fine, um, because they're not cleaning their yard. But, you know, again, as a last resort, if you don't take care of your property, well, we'll do what we have to do. So, but yes, Luke, uh, we're, we're working on that.
Great, thanks, Rick.
Yep.
Hey, Rick, this is.
Anybody have anything else?
This is Brian and I've been getting a lot of complaints about tall grass. Do you want me to email that to you? I know I've text a few to Sean. You want me just to get them to him? Do you want them? Wh- where do you, I mean, you want me just to keep giving them to Sean or do you want me to give them to you?
Well, with the tall grass, generally Sean takes care of that.
Okay.
But, no, you get the junk and all that stuff, just let us know.
Okay, yeah, I'll just, I'll either text them to Sean or email them to Sean like I, I have the few, but I've got a handful of them again, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Rick? Seeing none. Um, for my report, a couple things Rick mentioned, the wastewater plant and wastewater utility discussion. So, both the wastewater treatment plant committee and the budget committee have both talked various aspects of that issue. So, on Saturday, we're doing a coffee with the council, usual nine o'clock time, um, but we'll have different expertise there with us. Um, I don't have the full list of who RSVP'd us, but, um, but our wastewater folks, engineering folks, um, will be on there to, to talk about the project. So, I know we originally talked to Brian and Luke from Budget Committee about being involved in that because of the utility rate part of that discussion, but Jason, being on the treatment plant, expressed interest. So, I wanted to open up to see if other council wanted to be on it. Karen can, can notice it, so it's not a public meetings issue if we wanted, if everybody wanted to be part of it or you don't wanna talk wastewater, I wouldn't blame you either. So. So, if I'm seeing no interest from Sandy Barber, Dane, then we don't have a quorum issue, so we would not need to notice it. Okay. And we will go with that. Speaking of the coffees, it continued to go well this last one. We allowed the public to register to join us on the Zoom and we had a handful of folks do that. Um, it went, went well, no hitches as far as security goes, had a good discussion. Um, our viewership for all these ends up being somewhere around a thousand, except for when Luke and I nerded out on history, that was the lowest viewed. All the other ones had tons and tons of views, which is good. Um, it's a good, good way to involve the public and get good information out there, so. Um, such as this meeting now, we streamed for the first time. Um, and other than that, um, June fourth, city administrator candidate interviews, so, um, they're all able to make that. Karen and I are inviting some of the citizens back. Um, the way we moved it, there's, um, like we've talked about before, we'll have in the afternoon, the three mixed committees that we think will be more effective. So, it will have council, staff and citizens and all three groups that I think will get a little bit, um, better of an input process that way. So, I'm looking forward to changing that up and invites are going out for that. We basically have a schedule pretty much nailed down and I think will work well. Um, obviously, we'll still watch the situation on the ground and we'll have to determine the best way to do the tour, whether that's talking to Jason about a big, huge bus or if we go back to, 'cause we talked about doing individual vehicles with a candidate, a staff person and a council member or two. Um, so that, that way it lets the candidates ex, explore the departments without worrying about showmanship and one-upping each other and all that. So, um, we thought that might work a little bit better based on previous, um, processes too. So, uh, we'll, we'll hammer out how to, how we're gonna do the tour. I think that's really the last major detail we need to finalize. But I don't know if anyone has any opinions or anything you wanna throw in for, for that day or if all that sounds like a good plan?
I think it sounds like a good plan. I do wanna throw in one thing back to the coffees baked up, based on Luke's comment about nuisance abatement and all. I think that might be an interesting topic for a Saturday morning coffee in this, you know, kind of a timely topic as people are doing cleanup fix-up with the idea of maybe the, some of the resources for how do you get rid of stuff that you, you know, providing some assistance that way, just a, a suggestion of, that made me think as Luke has brought that up, that could be, I think that could be really beneficial for our city and in a positive way, not the finding, but the, but, you know, the, in that there are ways if people do wanna report that there's a, you know, there's a process for them.
That's definitely a good idea and I think that's worked out well, having the open discussion where any and all topics and then mix in some themed ones where we can dive a little bit deeper. So, obviously wastewater, this talking about rates in June, we wanted to get in front of the community, have that discussion, get it started sooner rather than later. So, but yeah.
That leads, that leads right into my hope that the yard waste committee can meet here soon with everything, uh, once everything starts calming down too. It can be wastewater and yard waste at the same time.
I, I noticed Luke's eyes immediately lit up when you mentioned that. Kid in the candy shop.
Yeah, Luke hasn't brought up yard waste at all. But yes, we do need to resume discussions there and that, part of that does play into wastewater anyway because of the future property there and if there's a fit to help that issue. Um, other than that, that mostly can, think concludes the big items I'd have in my report. And any questions for me? Okay, council reports.
I was just reiterate what you said about the coffee on Saturday. I thought that went well. I thought that it was a good format to have, uh, have folks on Zoom. I was a little leery of it, but that, that went really well. So, it was a good idea. Good job on you, Mr. Mayor for, uh, constantly thinking about ways to make this work better. So, uh, thank you for that and, uh, yeah, that's all I got.
Yeah, it, I, I'm glad it worked out and we figured out the security and that's one thing too, I was gonna talk to Karen too. With this webinar functionality, I don't know if we need to have, folks have to even type in passwords as much because we get control of at what everyone can do. They just sit in the attending mode and they can only watch unless we give them approval. So, we might be able to make it a little easier for folks dialing in on the phone to hit fewer buttons, but we're learning. It's better to be more secure than not secure enough. Any other council reports?
The Story County opioid task force met today via Zoom for the first time since our last in-person meeting, uh, two, at least two months ago. Just kinda trying to figure out maybe strategies on how to, how to keep working in this environment, uh, how to reach people, mainly social media type projects and that type of thing, but, uh, that was the main focus today.
That's good. I think one of the concerns in my profession is seeing an increase in substance abuse and a lot of the markers that we're seeing suggests that that is occurring and is probably gonna continue to from, as a, as a side thing. So, I think it's definitely good to, to, to stay, have that and be proactive. I mean, the amount of, um, alcohol sales and other substance metrics, um, are up.
Having sorted at the Kiwanis can shed multiple times, I can tell you alcohol consumption has not gone down in town in the last month.
Well, you might have some people bringing them there too who are not able to take them to Hy-Vee or wherever. Yeah.
True.
Still agree with that though, yes.
Any other council reports? Okay, then we'll go to staff and I will try to go down this list. It kinda moves around, so forgive me if I do it in a weird order, but I'm just gonna start at the top and we will go to Ray.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, the support tonight. I think that's great to move forward on our projects. Uh, I just wanna give you a quick couple of updates. We are up to about fifty birthday drive-bys. Uh, it seems like we're getting about four a day and have to keep printing our list, but it seems to be going real well. Uh, the other thing that Director Martinez and I were discussing today is official decision on fireworks for the Fourth of July. Uh, we've kinda set a drop-in date of May fifteenth, but we're gonna double-check with the fireworks vendor and find out what their drop date is for us to, uh, celebrate the Fourth of July. However, as we both agree, if we're still having two to four hundred cases that are being, uh, uh, discovered every day, it'd be pretty irresponsible of us to bring a big crowd into the square park. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Director Martinez will be making an official ruling here once we get some of that data. Uh, the last thing is, I had a really good discussion with Keith Morgan today from Emergency Management about, uh, future steps as, uh, schools reopen and I know it's early to talk that way, but, uh, the fall virus, uh, that usually takes place and what that'll mean for us with COVID. So, we're kinda just ramping up where we need to be with, uh, protective equipment and what the future looks like. So, uh, we've been having some pretty good discussions about where we are as a department and where he thinks folks need to be. So, uh, I thought it was good communication and we're all kind of tracking on the same page. But as of now, our folks are healthy and, uh, we wanna keep it that way.
Very good. Council, anything for Ray? Thanks, Ray. Now we'll go to Jeremy.
Oh, it's just, uh, business as usual out here. The Water Department had a few water breaks, as everybody knows, on Main Street. But they assured us today that we're out of that. But they assured us today that we're out of that kind of soil. Sean Cole can talk a little bit more about that, so the water mains will be a little bit better. Um, we're patching. I know, I know a lot of people are complaining about the rock on the road. You know, we have to do it. It's, it's, it's there for a week or so till the oil cures out and then we get it picked up. We picked up Lincoln Way today. So I hope that makes some people happier. But other than that, it's just business as usual. I, I can't wait to have my whole crew back so we can get some more stuff done. Anybody else got any questions for me?
Thanks, Jeremy. So since you mentioned Sean, let's go ahead to Sean.
Um, yeah, well, I like to thank Jeremy and, uh, Dave Harrison. They were out there today at the project, keeping an eye on stuff with me. It's always better to have a couple of, a couple more eyes, sets of eyes out there and, and Sean Ludwig. Um, we've had a lot of main breaks out there, that spot. They're, uh, I don't know if it's wishful thinking or not, but they're thinking that some of the dirt that they dug through there with the, where all the main breaks were, um, they're, they're getting out of that. It's getting, look, look a little bit different, so I hope it's true. Um, definitely don't need any more of those breaks. It's just frustrating because there's not a lot you can do to, to keep that from happening. Um, we're, uh, making good progress. We, we should be out of, uh, out of, uh, six, 6th Street there between J and K. Um, next week, the big crew will go over. They'll start sewer from K to Lincoln Way. And the other crew's got about another week of putting the services into the buildings and then hooking the water up as we go along. So they'll probably be there next week and then after that, we'll be turning that street over to, uh, to construct. Um, a kind of good idea that, some things that we've done since 8th Street, um, we have all, after that, we've always required the services be brought out of, from underneath the street, so it's not just an add-on where they wouldn't have the parts and maybe they had to remember which street, you know, write down which address was gonna, had paid the money and which one hadn't, so. From now on, they've just, that's all that s- four-inch white pipe out there. That's what that's for and, um, we just, it's an automatic thing now, so it's not, it's not something that they're just as, something that they have to try, try to remember to do every once in a while. Um, other than that, we also are looking, we've got the South Glen construction drawings. Um, hopefully we'll be reviewing those and making a recommendation, uh, the next council meeting and then also we've got a, uh, a West F Industrial Park. Um, the end of West F was purchased by, uh, Matt Rungy and he has got a preliminary plat- for us that hopefully planning and zoning will be looking at in June. So, um, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Hopefully everybody.
Council, anything else for Sean? Okay, and Sean, one question I had, I know we talked about the potential to go up to M on 6th Street. What's the date you expect to have to make that decision?
Um, they would be, they would have the sewer in, uh, the week of the 18th. And Memorial Day, um, kind of a short week there. A storm would be in on, um, on that last week in May. I'd, maybe about the second week of June. Is when we'd start to discuss that.
That's when they would, after, or that's when they would move up down.
We would talk about whether or not we were going to move north. Um, there's some things, you know, you had to order some structures and, um, get some pipe and stuff like that that he hasn't, he hasn't had ordered yet, so, um. Yeah, I'd say probably second week in June and we'd probably be looking a couple of weeks after that, we'd probably look to start.
Okay.
Or a week or so after that.
And are we still looking at, and are we still looking at it being done to Lincoln?
Yes, uh, we'll, uh, I would say by the end of July, yeah, we should be out of there.
Okay.
So yeah, we're good. Moving a little quicker on the services, getting a little bit better at it every time. You know, they just got that two, that little machine two weeks ago and, uh, we've been learning on the fly, but, uh, they're getting a little better every time and we're a little bit more efficient as we go along. So yeah, it, uh, um, I, we can, we can make by the end of July, I'm pretty sure.
And then also, so that all council knows, we had some concerns from some downtown folks about those water main breaks. Sean, it's correct that basically it's the old tile mains that are breaking because they're so fragile.
Yeah, well, they're cast iron water mains. Yeah, they're just, it's just really fragile right there. We've had five main breaks and four of them were within about, uh, 20 feet of each other. It, uh, it just, it's just frustrating. Uh, they're not hitting the main at any time or pulling the core out or doing something like that. These guys are actually locating all that stuff and staying away from those things. It's just the vibration, uh, when they're backfilling their trenches, backfilling something around that main, you know, that they're work, that they're working on, um, that causes those leaks. So it, it's frustrating, um, but everybody has been pretty, seemed to be pretty, uh, um, pretty understanding about it, so we'll, uh, hopefully, like I said, we found some better dirt and maybe we'll, we'll get out of that spot and that, uh, that main should probably be dead by the middle of next week anyway.
It underscores the reason we need to get those. At fragile.
Yep. Oh, and I'd like to say I have sent four, uh, four letters out to, uh, four yard, uh, yards too, so. We are trying to keep on track of that. Um, I've got my little list and we'll keep making that circle, but yeah, go ahead and send me any you, you, you want to, want to do.
And I know one other topic. I know Metronet had said that they're working with you on your timeline. Is there any update on that?
Uh, they sent the permit in. Um, we've approved that. We've got the maps. We're just waiting on them.
Okay. And I know they, they request additional coffee with the community to talk about the logistics that homeowners could expect. I'm sure we'll, and I think they are on our next agenda.
Oh, cool. Oh, and I guess, uh, the gas, the, the electrical service project that, uh, Alliance did last fall, they came in and, and did all the repairs for that and they're starting to do the repairs for the gas main project this week, so probably by, about the end of next week, or end of this week, middle of next week, we'll hopefully be, have everything cleaned up.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sean. Now we will move on to Shanna. Shanna, thank you for that good report and our packet. I appreciate that.
Sure, no problem. Uh, yeah, I mean, we've been working on it and kind of putting it together. Um, our reopening plan, um, and how we're going to phase things. Um, we still don't really have a, a timeline per se for how we're, when we're going to start these different phases. Um, a lot of that has to do with, um, some pretty high unease from staff about inadvertently, you know, spreading things from items that come back or people, you know, who have, who come to the library and, you know, uh, touch something that inadvertently had something on it, you know, um, and so we've got quite a bit of unease about that, um, but we're, we know that the time will come, um, so we want to have something in place for, for when that does come and when we're able to kind of do that and it may be, uh, really very small steps of, you know, maybe we do curbside for just a couple hours during the week instead of kind of the longer stints that we did um, in the past to be able to allow people to get stuff, but to kind of cut back on some of that unease too, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Council, anything for library? Okay, thank you.
And I, I do think that, um, if we could get it on one of the Saturday morning coffee things at some point to kind of be able to get that out to people, um, that would be helpful if that would be a possibility.
I'll make a note here. Okay, um, let me see who else we have. How about if we go to Karen?
Well, one reminder I want to make, um, the second meeting in May is actually on Tuesday, the 26th. So I just wanted to remind council of that. Um, then the other thing I was, uh, been working a lot on is there's uh, several surveys out there between IAMU and, um, the league's also got some, um, worksheets that, uh, we're working with to just try and estimate a little bit on the revenue shortfall and um, what expenses we see might be coming too, so just trying to watch what's, what's happening with our budgets. That's really all I had.
Council, anything for Karen? Thank you, Karen. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sean has covered most everything that we're working on up there with the, uh, street improvements and the South Glen and West F Avenue subdivisions. Um, you did mention that there's a 60% uh, stage review with the committee on wastewater treatment facilities. Um, in relation to that, we, um, we have developed a, uh, a, a submittal to the Story County Planning and Development Staff for the, uh, condition of use permit that, uh, will, is necessary for that site, uh, where the treatment plant will go on. And, uh, we had a meeting with the, uh, with the sta- with the, uh, Story County staff last Thursday and that went very well and they had a whole list of, uh, of things that they, uh, they want and, uh, so as we, uh, as we finalize the site plan, we will be, uh, submitting that application for the condition use permit to be submitted to, uh, for review by their Planning and Zoning Commission and then, uh, hopefully final approval from the, uh, from the Board of Adjustment. I, I think because of the, uh, the amount of information that they want, they want a lot of detailed information for the application, so it will probably be, probably late this fall before we have all of that prepared. And, um, so we will, uh, we'll keep working towards the, uh, towards the goal of getting the parents' approval for that condition use permit. It's going to take quite a bit of time, a lot of information and, uh, for us best to be prepared or any type of questions that might come up at that time, so. Um, other than that, I would, um, entertain any questions that you might have about anything.
Council, anything for Larry? Okay, and I think that takes us to Erin.
And I don't have anything to report this evening.
Perfect. That's my preference usually.
I know it.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
Flag it.
Hey, Dane and Jason, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.